Okay, we're ready to.
All right, great. Well, I think we have, uh, we have our quorum. Thanks, thanks to Darlene for joining our group. So, this is, uh, my name is Tim Johnson. We call this regular meeting of the Major X Citizen Oversight Committee to Order. We're conducting this meeting by teleconference and it is being recorded. The agenda for the meeting is on the city's website at www.sana-anna.org. Members, the public will have the opportunity to address the Major X Citizen Oversight Committee regarding agenda and non-agenda items during the public comment section of the meeting, even though we're not physically meeting together. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance wherever you are. All right, ready, begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and, uh, Kristen, if you want to go ahead and call roll first, that'd be great.
Sure. Councilmember Lewis, or councilmember, I'm sorry. Committee member Lewis.
I'm present.
Committee member Lugo.
Present.
Committee member Perez.
Present.
Chair Johnson.
I'm present also.
We have a quorum.
All right, excellent. And, uh, this would be the time for the public to comment on agenda and non-agenda items if we have anyone. Uh, Kristen, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on any agenda or non-agenda item?
We do not.
All right, very good. And so we have, um, our first, uh, item up is the consent calendar, um, which is, uh, I think it just has the, uh, the minutes on it. But first, before we, uh, do that, let's, uh, let's introduce Darlene Perez. And Darlene, if you want to maybe give a, just a quick, uh, quick spiel, and then each of us will do the same real quick.
Like about myself?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great. Um, I currently am in the mortgage industry. I've been in it for almost three years now. Time flies really fast. Um, and I'm super happy to be part of Committee X and really just be a part, a little bit more of my community and represent Ward One.
All right, excellent. And so Ward, Ward One is, uh, let's see, I think that's a council member, is that Fan? That type of fan? Awesome. All right, very good. Uh, Alonso, you want to do the same? So you can introduce ourselves to Darlene.
Or can you hear me okay? Just want to make sure I'm off mute. Right on. Hey Darlene, welcome to the gang. Like I said earlier, uh, my name's Alonso. I've been, uh, part of the Measure X Committee, actually since I believe since it started, uh, I was part of the inaugural, um, commissioners that was part of this team. And at this point, I think it's been five years, four years? Sheesh, I don't even know how long. It's been a while. But, but bottom line, it's a good group. Uh, I, I am, um, under council member Lopez. And, uh, this is Ward Three. Um, you know, lifelong resident of Santa Ana, Marine Corps veteran. Uh, I'm a twenty-plus-year career with, um, in the industry that I'm in right now. It's land use development and business management. Uh, just been doing it and I volunteered for this job. So luckily at the time, um, the council member, uh, asked me to, to go ahead and take on this role and been doing it ever since. But I think what you'll find is a very good admirable, uh, cause to, um, you know, pay attention to where this money is going and prepare the city, uh, for the long term of how to use the money and, um, you know, long-term where we're going with it. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah, Nancy, go for it.
All right. Hi Darlene, I'm Nancy Lewis. I am a Ward Four resident, actually. I'm under council member Becerra. And I've been on the committee, I think, two years, maybe, ish, two, two years. Um, it's been a great experience, um, an opportunity for me to get more involved in the community. Um, I, you know, I love living in Santa Ana, and so I'm just really happy to represent my ward on this committee. We're a great group. We get a lot accomplished, I, I feel. Um, and, um, I like being in a role of oversight and, and providing, um, recommendations and making sure that, you know, the money's going where it needs to go, on behalf of the city. So, welcome to the group, darling.
Thank you.
And lastly, I'm, uh, I'm Tim Johnson. I'm the, the chair, chair of this, of this group and, uh, happy to have you join us. Uh, not only because, uh, uh, we had now have a quorum, but because I think you have a, some, some, some good experience that will help us out. Um, and, uh, bring, bring another voice to, to this group. I'm a CPA, uh, by, uh, well, I would say by day, but this time is by day and night. And, um, so, uh, mainly work in the, uh, in the tax, uh, tax sector, um, so income tax sector and, uh, sales tax and, and that type of, that type of stuff. My office is in Irvine. I live in Ward Three. Uh, I'm the, the May, May oral appointment. And, uh, been in Santa Ana for, oh goodness, uh, eighteen years or so now. And, uh, really, really, uh, enjoy, uh, enjoy our city and being involved with it. So, um, so that's that. And then we'll also, you'll hear more from, uh, for, for, from Catherine, from Alex and, and Kristen as the meeting goes, goes along. And so, uh, you'll get to know them also. Um, although I think this was a consent calendar item, so I guess technically we pulled it off the consent calendar and, uh, and, uh, now we can, uh, vote on, uh, the remaining consent calendar items, which was, um, our, our, uh, minutes from the January eighteenth meeting. And so if there's, uh, if hopefully we've had a opportunity to review, uh, those, those minutes, um, I will go ahead and make the motion to approve since, uh, my, I was at that meeting as well as Alonso. Uh, so, uh, if I could get a second, that would be great.
I'll second that motion.
All right, excellent. Thank you. And, uh, if there's any discussion items, uh, now be the time to, to raise your hand or voice your, uh, if not, then, um, if we could call the, call the vote, that'd be great.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lugo?
Aye.
Committee member Perez?
Aye.
Chair Johnson?
That's an aye for me also. You're giving us, uh, some, uh, promotions here.
Motion, motion passes.
Excellent. Um, so our, uh, our next, uh, item is number three on our agenda, which, uh, uh, is, uh, with, with, with Alex and our Major X revenue update. So take it away.
Uh, thank you, Chair Johnson. So my name is Alex Trinidad. So I am the Assistant Director here at the city. And I'll be giving you a brief update on our Measure X revenues, and these are through February, uh, 2023. So, uh, next slide. So this is a summary, uh, for our most recent quarter, which represents, um, receipts received December through February. So I would like to remind the committee and also for the, the new members that the city receives, uh, estimates advances throughout the year and is trued up every three months. Uh, so for the month of December, you could see a peak there. So this represents a true-up for the fourth quarter, uh, 2022. Uh, so the total receipt for this quarter is, uh, twenty-two million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, uh, which is net of the CPTF APs of sixty-one thousand. Um, in addition, I included a reconciliation at the bottom left corner of the slide, uh, which shows actual receipts, uh, by the reporting period. Uh, so this is a little bit different than based on the receipts, uh, when they're received. So I'll go this, I'll go over this a little bit more and in the different slides, but, uh, next slide. All right. So this is our Measure X, uh, receipts received for fiscal, uh, for this fiscal year. So our total receipts, uh, through February equal, uh, forty-four million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Uh, so this represents, uh, periods from July through February. So compared to the prior year, this is an increase of around one point five million, uh, through the same period. Uh, so this is a net increase of four percent. Uh, the increase is positive, but we do see a trend that our revenues are leveling and are not drastically increasing like in previous years after the pandemic. So the sectors that are doing well include transportation, construction, um, business to business. And the last one is general retail. They're still doing good, uh, but it's not having increased drastically like in prior periods. Uh, next slide. So this is our chart, um, summary using the reporting period versus when they're actually received. So as you can see on this chart, it tells us a bit of a story. So the most recent years. So you could see a slight reduction during the second quarter of 2022, uh, due to COVID. The periods after this, there have been consistent increases due to, uh, economic activity and also the wait for decision. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we are noticing a leveling of our revenues when looking at reporting period. Uh, so here you could see a slight reduction of around one million when comparing the fourth quarter of 2022, twenty-twenty-one and comparing to our most recent quarter, uh, fourth quarter of 2022. Uh, next slide. So we don't have any recommended, recommended changes for our Measure X revenues for this year. Uh, just a reminder, we do have our estimated revenues at eighty-eight million, a hundred and two thousand for our fiscal year 2023. Uh, we do have our scheduled meeting with our self-take consultant next week. So we'll report to the committee if we see any noticeable or significant changes, if any. And then we do have, um, the next step that we're going to do is for taking our third quarter budget adjustments during the May uh, council meeting. So during that, uh, report, we'll include any updates to our revenue projections, if any, and also request for any additional appropriations if needed. Uh, so this concludes my presentation on the revenue updates, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
All right, excellent. Thanks, Alex. Um, so if, uh, let's do a walk around. If we have any questions, uh, for Alex, I'm going to purposely do Darlene, uh, uh, second to last, just so we can let other people go. Uh, so she, she can kind of give the feel of things. So I'm going to start with member, member Lewis.
I know, no questions at this time. Thank you for the update.
All right, and member Lugo?
Uh, thank you, Alex. I'm good. No questions.
All right, and member Perez?
Uh, same. No questions. Thank you.
Alex, I have a, uh, one, one question for you. So we're up about just shy of four percent. Um, is one, uh, what, what did we budget our, our increase to be for this fiscal year?
Uh, compared to the prior year?
Yeah, so our current fiscal, so, uh, be June 2023, uh, versus June, uh, like the, so I guess the budget versus actual or however you guys, uh, you kind of look at it.
So this fiscal year, so twenty-two, twenty-three, we budgeted eighty-eight million and a hundred thousand, right? Last year, fiscal year twenty-two, we ended up at eighty-six million. I don't know the exact number, but I think it was around eighty-six, right? Uh, so it is an increase of, call it, two million from the prior year.
It's a percentage. So it was eighty-six, zero, zero, three, zero, zero, one. And as a percentage increase, it is calculating on the fly.
All right.
Only two point four percent.
Okay.
Increase.
Okay, so even with our declining, I mean, we're at three, three and change, just shy of four. So even with, uh, if we continue to see a declining trend, I mean, we're, I mean, we're, we're not, um, going to be way out of the ballpark from our budget, it appears, uh,
Now, we, we don't anticipate to be way off the ballpark, but then we, I think, if we could sort of hear something otherwise, I think we're going to be around the ballpark, around, around either eighty-eight or a little bit more than that.
Okay. And then I, obviously, as you're working on your budget for this, uh, upcoming year, which I'm assuming you're already crunching numbers. It probably feels like you start crunching on the day after you got done with the first one, or the last year. Um, that I would assume that you're going to be taking that into account, that decline or essentially declining rate of increase, um, slower growth.
So our sales tax consultant, you know, obviously they, uh, as you well know, they give us estimates that we use, uh, for budgeting purposes. But, um, because of, you know, it's been a completely different world the last few years. Their, their estimates have kind of, you know, fluctuated quite a bit quarter to quarter. There, you know, they take their estimate up and then they give us their assumptions and then they take their estimate down and they give us their assumptions. So what I've gotten into the habit of doing over the last several quarters is comparing it with the other, uh, information from the other, uh, big consultant that operates in the state for sales tax, uh, advice. There's two of them that are the, the primary players in our, in our sphere, if you will. And so I've been comparing information from both and, and kind of seeing, you know, like the in-between, if you will, and, and so that's why I feel comfortable leaving the estimates where they're at. Uh, it's just, it, it's just not enough to, to want to change our number. Cause right now I'm thinking that maybe it'll only be about a hundred and five thousand dollars off. And it's just not enough to, to keep changing our number over and over again. So.
Yeah. Perfect. All right, that, that's it for me. And, uh, I think, uh, Alex, you'll be on for, um, number four here also, which is our expenditure update.
Yep. All right. So good evening again, committee members. So I'm going to give you, provide you with a brief update on our, uh, measure X expenditures. And these are through January 2023. Um, we're still working on closing month of February, so that's why we're using, uh, our update for January. So this is an update on our Measure X expenditures report through January. So we have a total expenditures of forty-three million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand. So we typically, uh, pay invoices one or two months after the services, uh, were provided. So as of January thirty-first, it would be normal that actual spending would be less than what you would expect at January. So, you know, month seven out of twelve, you know, you would expect something around fifty-three point six million dollars. Um, during our year-end process for financial reporting, you know, accounting staff will review invoices and accrue these to the proper period or fiscal year if appropriate. So this would help, uh, with capturing expenditures in the, in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So there were several, uh, one-time items that were added during this fiscal year. Uh, these typically take, uh, time to get the project, uh, going, uh, for it, either it's a project or a program. And so there may be a request for a carryover, carryover of unspent amount to the next fiscal year to allow the department, uh, to complete the project. So these are typically, uh, the carryover requests are typically done in the month of September. And, and this is more of a timing for cash flow of the disbursement. Uh, so I'm going to go over a couple of the major expenditures, uh, so far. So the plan used of general fund reserve and plant staff savings are not implemented, account for eleven point seven million dollars of our expenditures. Uh, costs related to maintaining parks include, uh, facilities for personnel of six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Also security for the park of a hundred and twenty thousand. So this is something that was just added recently. So that's why, uh, the amount is not significant for now. Uh, the next one is for the vehicle incentive program. Uh, we did, we did have, uh, we did pay a total of four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars so far this year. Uh, staff is requesting the last one-year extension of this program. And so this would put us through April 2024 for the vehicle incentive program. Uh, expenditures related to public safety, uh, response, that includes labor and contractual. But these costs include, uh, costs related to our police officers going out and responding to any homeless-related calls around the city of Santa Ana. Uh, another major expenditure includes the, our Orange County Fire Authority contract. So these are the costs increases since Measure X was approved back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Uh, we budgeted a total of two point eight million for parking assistance. So we have transferred a total of around one point six million to the Parking Enterprise Fund. So the city has provided free parking in the downtown area to help with business due to the impact of the OC streetcar construction. Uh, in addition, the city also dispersed the amount that we budgeted of one point five billion, uh, for the Santa Ana Business Interruption Fund Program. Uh, we also provided a million and twenty-five thousand for the Bowers Museum for building rehab. So these are costs for, uh, capital-related improvement programs. And then the last one I want to mention is we do have, uh, we funded our pension stabilization funds, our one-fifteen trust. Uh, the general fund portion is seven point seven million. Uh, we did include a detailed expenditure report, um, that we provided to the committee and it's also posted online, uh, if you want to go a little bit more detail. So, the next slide. So the next couple of slides, I included a quick recap of what the planned spend for Measure X is. So for our current fiscal year, and I also included a one-time, uh, recurring versus one-time. Uh, so this concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
All right, perfect. So we're going to do, uh, do a walk around in the same order. So, uh, we're going to start with, uh, with member Lewis. If you have any questions or comments for Alex?
No questions at this time. Thank you for the update.
And member Lugo?
Hey, Alex, um, walk me through the definition of a carryover budget. You explained that earlier.
Sure. So, um, you know, let's use an example. Typically, we do, carryovers is something where, like, for example, we got, uh, we got approval for budget, uh, for example, for a project, a capital project for this fiscal year. And like I mentioned before, typically projects take a while. So like, for example, they have to do the design, for, you know, they have to do a, a RFP, a request for proposal, and then we get bids from vendors, actually contractors. But so it takes a while, right? And so when we do a carryover, it's basically what we're doing is we're carrying over unspent budget to the next fiscal year to allow the department to complete the project. So it's a process. Not everything is, uh, eligible to be carried over. So the things that we typically do is project, capital projects, grants, uh, are another example, and just one-time costs. We won't carry over, you know, uh, like ongoing maintenance costs, for example, because we assume that departments would budget that in the corresponding, uh, year, right? Um, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. So, um, how does that relate to the zero dollars spent to date for the two categories that were shown on your first slide? I believe one of them was, um, Police Department retention and the other was, forgot.
It was fixing streets.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised to see that on both, on both, uh, line items. At this point of the year, I would think that there would be some sort of expenses tied to that line item.
So for the fixing the streets, those are, uh, capital projects and those are the ones that may take a while. So we'll probably start seeing expenditures later in the year. For retaining police officers, this is, um, something that we typically do a comparison to, um, the retaining police officers include costs such as increases in labor costs as well as increases for benefits, right? And we'll typically do, uh, a comparison between our base year, which was eighteen nineteen, and compare it to our current year, right? And we'll report increases in that line item. And typically we won't see them because you'll see the, you'll start seeing the difference in the increase in the cost later in the year. And so typically, I don't know, uh, in prior, uh, quarter updates, we typically don't report as much in that section. Uh, but you will see it in like, call it in June, once, once most of the expenditures have been posted and we can do like a real comparison, uh, from the base year to the current year, and then we'll start seeing that increase in costs, uh, for retaining police officers.
Got it. And for the benefit of the community, that when you say later in the year, it's always the fiscal year that you're referencing, right?
That's correct. So just, uh, for Darlene, our fiscal year starts in July first and it goes through June thirtieth. Uh, so for our, this fiscal year will end in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Yep.
And, uh, member Perez, do you have, uh, do you have any questions?
Not right now. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'm going to piggyback a little bit on, uh, Alonso's question. So the five million on the, the POA contract makes sense. Essentially, it's, uh, you're not requ, you're really kind of doing a cost recovery for the first eleven months and then every dollar after you hit that mark is going to hit into that five million. It kind of feels like, um, on the fixing streets, is there a plan for that? Or, I mean, because it's a, I mean, when, when we included the fixing streets, uh, was that it's, uh, about five, five million and change, right? Five point two million. Um, so do, you know, does, uh, do, do they, does Public Works know about that? Do they have a plan for it? Or is it like, uh, something they're going to subsidize, you know, projects that they're, you know, going to get grant funding for? So it may not be for a little while, or what, you know, what, what's kind of the situation there?
Uh, they actually do have a plan for it. It's just that they have, you know, so many items, uh, so many projects in the queue that they're working on. And so you may not see any expenditures if they're doing things like, you know, preparing to go out to bid or something like that. And we haven't spent any money. So what we can do for the committee is we will follow up with an email. We'll check with Public Works and see when they plan on spending that five point two million, because they usually have a pretty good schedule of when they know they're going to get to different things. So we'll follow up with the committee and let you know what we find out from them about the timing on spending that money.
And would, would this be something that, um, would be part of that carryover type thing? So if they don't do it this year, you know, does it, you know, carry over to next year, especially on these, um, okay.
Yeah. And, and another thing for the carryovers to keep in mind, um, and Darlene, this is partially for you. The city council, they adopt a budget one year at a time. And so, um, when we fund a project that may be, that may take multiple years or may fall over two fiscal years or something like that, um, we make sure that we fund the entire project, even though we're not going to spend it in that year, because we're going to enter into a contract with a vendor. And so you, if you think of it from a vendor standpoint, they wouldn't want to do business with the city if they, you know, if they entered into a contract to do five million dollars worth of street repairs and we haven't funded it yet in the budget. So that's, that's part of the reason. And, and then with adopting the budget one year at a time, that's why we end up just carrying over the unused. But as Alex said, we don't carry over normal operating costs. These are, these are, we stick to just, you know, capital projects and other one-time projects and initiatives.
And that, that five, not all of that five-two, I think it's like four, four point five, it looks like, that is in the recurring cost column. So, so let's say that we didn't, they didn't spend anything in this fiscal year. Would they really have, uh, so take the five-two plus the four-five? So for next fiscal year, would they be looking at nine million plus? Uh, okay.
Yeah. And, and the reason that we've got it in the recurring column is it's part of their pavement management program. So, um, it's not like a typical, like buying pencils or paying salaries or that kind of thing. It's, it, they're, they're actually going out to bid for a set contract, because maybe, you know, with this contract, they're going to do, you know, main and first and fifth or something like that. They, they focus on an area and then go out to contract for that area. Um, so we just call it recurring, even though it's not really, but, um, because it's not like they're going to do main and first again the following year. Um, but it's just because it's part of their pavement management program where they're constantly going back and going, okay, what's the next batch of streets that we're going to do? What's the next batch of streets we're going to do?
Okay.
Hey, yeah. Can I add, can I add to the, to the, to the question? So how much of that five million dollars that is, um, part of the Measure X funds for street improvement? How much of, of that dollar amount makes up their total dollar amount? I guess what I'm trying to say is, uh, what percentage of the five million is their total budget for year-over-year maintenance of that streets? Or their plan?
That's kind of hard to identify. We, we could put our finger on it, but we won't be able to do that right this instant. Um, I can tell you that what they have there for fixing streets that's gen, funded by the general fund, that's probably the entirety of it. Um, but they, they use a lot of restricted money to work on streets. So we have, uh, gas tax, uh, which is cents per gallon that you guys pay, that everybody pays at the pump. And then we also have other restricted sources that we use to fix our streets too, you know, whether it be, um, Caltrans money or federal streets money, you know, that kind of thing. So there's, there's all kinds of restricted pots of money that go into fixing streets. So what you see here is, is definitely not the entire budget, but I, but I'm pretty sure it's the entire amount that's funded with the general fund. Because prior to Measure X, there was no money coming out of the general fund for fixing streets. They were completely and totally relying on the restricted, uh, resources.
You know, that's, that's a bit of a, a, a You know, that's, that's a bit of a, of a concern for me. I, I actually would think that the city would. Be a little bit more proactive, not to say that they're not in the manner of. Having a plan, but being more proactive and actually showing the dollar that's associated to the improvements that are happening throughout the city. And obviously, you, you know, I drive around the city and I do see some things that are being worked on, but I, I think it, there would be. A benefit for the public to see that the dollar is being spent specifically. And more importantly, how, what streets are being addressed and what streets are being touched on. So I don't know if public works specifically can. I don't know, represent that, illustrate that in a different manner, but I could tell you looking at a budget. That has a.
I think it's actually on the website. Looking for it right now. And you know, I can, I, I, again, I can follow up, but I'm pretty sure that they have some information. Out on the website about their program.
Oh, that'd be great to share. Yeah, I think especially something in a form like this, because I don't know about you, but sometimes I, I jump on to. Recorded versions of committees that. You know, have already been held and information like this, I think would be great for the public.
Yeah, yeah, I did find it.
Yeah.
I'll send, I'll send everybody the link after the meeting.
Is it on the typical sanana.org public works type of Google?
Yeah, if you, if you do the Santa Ana website, then you go to departments, public works. And then in pub, under public works, there's a long list of different things like frequently asked questions and water services, et cetera, et cetera. About halfway down that list, there's projects and C I P. And if you click on projects and C I P, there will actually be a construction map that shows up and then a list of. Yep, yep, yep.
Good, okay. Yeah, I appreciate that director. Thank you.
Yes, that's good. And let's see, I think. My other, so we have one point five million of the, for the business interruption fund. I'm sorry, the South Main Corridor, the restaurant, restaurant fund, restaurant incubation fund. Right next to each other, so I read the wrong, the wrong item there. But so is there? For, for that particular item, and I know that like, South Main Street is, you know, still kind of getting buttoned and buttoned up and. And, and stuff from the pretty major construction there. Is that, is that program? Gonna start hitting, hitting hyperdrive here, or you know, we've spent seventy five thousand of the one point five million. One time funds.
Typically, what cities do, and, and this city is no exception, is you typically spend your restricted resources first. Because a lot of times they have timing restrictions on them. And so I know Public Works also has some restricted money for that project. And so they're probably busy spending that restricted money first, and then they'll spend the general fund last.
But is this, this is specifically for a restaurant?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking of the South Main Corridor improvement. Sorry, sorry. Yeah, the restaurant incubation. Yeah, all right. Well, well, we're gonna, we're asking about the other, and so we'll ask about this one as well. And follow up with the committee. I'm so sorry.
No, you, you're, you're fine. You got a lot of, a lot of accounts to keep track of in your head. So, all right, great. And, and I'm, I'm not, I'm gonna resist, resist my ears to ask about the two hundred fifty three dollars in the, that we spent on the city events budget. Right above it, but of the million fifty thousand.
I'm curious, I wanna know, was it a barbecue that I wasn't invited to?
I don't know the exact amount, it's likely for supplies, but I think a lot of our events are probably gonna start happening soon. But yeah, we do have a lot, we do have budget at one million for. City events.
Yeah. Well, very good. It's, it's, if nothing else, it just tells us that we're tracking every dollar. So that's great. So, all right, well, that, that's all, all my questions unless anything else came up anyone's mind while, while, while we're chatting there. If not, I think we are now moving on to our next and I think last item on the. On the agenda, which is item number four, which is our responsibility to prepare annual report. For the city council. So as a reminder, was, you know, this group, you know, provides information to the, the public as well as. Provide some information to the council. And so once a year, we provide. This to the council, and this is the time that we're, we're doing this at the direction of, and advice of Director Downs. I think we're trying to get this done tonight, so that way. We can present it to, can get given to the council at their next. At their next council meeting at the end of the month. So.
And if I could just give you an update on that, we were, that was scheduled to go on March twenty first. Which would be the early direction report for council, and that's the one that I, you know, was hoping that you guys would be able to target. That's been moved to April fourth, and the reason being is because we took them the mid-year report at the last meeting, which was not last night. But the one before that, which was the second meeting in February. And they did not take, take action on the mid-year report and they continued it to March twenty first. And we felt that it would be confusing for the council and the public to be discussing mid-year of one year. Plus early direction for the next year on the very same agenda. So we, we booted the other one to April fourth.
Okay, but it, it doesn't change our timing to where we want to get this done tonight. So that way, because we don't have another meeting in between unless we were to call a special meeting. So.
That's correct.
So that's kind of our, our goal, is, you know, to get it to them in early April instead of. Early May, I think it's been kind of in the past, so that way they have more time to digest it and incorporate it into their suggestions. I, we had our last meeting, we, we had set up an ad hoc with, with myself, with. With member Lugo as well as then member Perea, which we kind of had, kind of had met. And went over some stuff. Kristin, I sent to you just earlier today, unfortunately. But earlier today, kind of the, the recap of that, do you have that, that you can share so we could, we could go over it?
Yeah, Kat, Kat will share it on her screen.
Okay, awesome. So in front of us, this is, so at the top, the top part is what we did last year. Okay, and so that was kind of our, our starting spot, and I think that we were pretty. You know, pretty okay with items number one, items number three. Four and five. Which I just want to point out, especially after, you know, the meeting, you know, which is, I think, why I was probably asking some questions on the street and probably. Remember Lugo, you know, number five is, you know, fixing streets. And so we put money into the fixing streets, but you know, we got actually fixed streets. So. You know, may, maybe even after kind of hearing what I heard tonight, maybe not just shift major revenue or major X revenue to fixing streets, but to take action on it. Although I think it's relatively implied, so I'm only half, half serious on that. The one change that we did, oh my gosh, I totally forgot to. Okay, so yeah, on number two, that was supposed to be split in half. So the, the bottom half is the draft of what we kind of came up with, or at least a. Member Prey, member Lugo said, hey Tim, you know, take the discussion item and, and move it into this. So number two, we need to put a period after. The, the police calls in there and remove the, you know, after the comma. Yeah, there you go. Thanks. And so, and I think we. Yeah, so this was, you know, we, we, we had, and also cat the seed economic development, so that whole, yeah, there you go. Yep. So that, that part is actually, it's, it's gone altogether. You're a lot better with your, your table. Table skills in mind, because I just added number six, which is the split of, of that number, so you can get rid of number three altogether. And in terms of the economic development, you were kind of, and we spoke a little bit about this at our last meeting. In terms of the mobile food vendors, street vendors, which anyone that's been following, following along. At the council meetings, this is not gonna be any new item for them, because it's been a very debated topic for them. And so I want to weight a little bit lightly, but still give them, you know, some, you know, so, some, some opinion on it. And so what we had kind of focused on a little bit with our sub, subcommittee was. You know, kind of focusing on the, the education and registration type stuff efforts for those mobile food vendors. And then also, since we are a major X. Committee, you know, focusing, you know, a little bit on the, hey, if we can get, get these folks. Registered and, and, and whatnot, then that means they should also be increased our, our sales tax compliance, which would. You know, impact major X. And so that number six is, thank you, Director Downs for, for your quick editing skills there. So number six is, you know, kind of a new item. On it, that kind of takes out the CD and economic development, community cooperatives and replacing it with, with, with the. You know, desire to increase sales tax compliance as well as registration and education efforts for. Mobile street vendors. So open to comments or, or changes, especially from member Lugo. Since you're a part of that group, to make sure I, I had, you know, kind of captured our, the essence of it. And obviously. Member Perez is the, you know, first time you've been part of this, part of this group. And so we'd love to hear any, any thoughts you have. On this, as we go forward also. Alonso, did, is this kind of capturing? The essence of our conversation, especially considering what's happened lately at the council, that we don't need to reiterate what they're talking about already.
You, you know, I, our goal was really to, to. Reduce our presentation, presentation is something that's so. Simple and easy to digest, and I think this is exactly what we agreed on and, and what we wanted. It looks good and it's, it really prioritizes, you know, what we're fixed on and. The areas in which we're concerned about, you know, the things that we kind of continually want to drive home with the council. I think it looks good. Sher Johnson, good job. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Member Louis, do you have any, any thoughts, comments?
I don't. This looks great. You know, thank you to the subcommittee for putting this together. And also capturing the essence of what we discussed, you know, the quarter after quarter. I think this is great to submit to the council. Thank you.
And Kat, I'm gonna want, I'm gonna give you a heads up that after. You know, I, I would like your comments on it, especially on number six. But, but before we get to there, member Perez. You know, do you have any thoughts, especially, you know, maybe his first time seeing this?
Yeah, no, this looks great. I just read over everything and I love what's put together. The only. I think I'd love a little bit more clarification on is number three, explore establishing a measure X sunset stabilization fund.
Yeah, so I'll speak into this a little bit. So. In two thousand and, let's see, twenty nine? Just wait here, let me, we have a, so we, we decrease in twenty twenty nine from one point five percent. To one percent of, of is our major X percentage. Okay, and so in twenty twenty nine, we have a effectively a one third decrease in our major X revenue. If all, you know, stays the same, which is gonna be about a twenty million dollar hit. Per year. And so what this, with the goal of this stabilization fund would be is saying, hey, let's. Let's put some, instead of having a twenty million dollar hit in year, you know, twenty nine, twenty twenty nine to twenty thirty. Or it actually might be twenty, yeah, anyway, in a one year twenty million dollar hit. What's, you know, can we put away some money today to where we can then level that off a little bit? I mean, there's still gonna be a hit. Okay, but instead of a twenty million dollar hit, are we able to reduce that to maybe, you know, a gradual slope to where we're, you know. You know, year one, five million dollar hit, year two, ten million, year three, and you know, kind of a slope instead of a big drop. So that, that's the goal of, of this. The council at Director Downs is, I believe, encouragement was successful at doing a similar type thing on some of the pension. Pension work, if I recall correctly, to where, you know, they're putting away some money for. On some pension savings that they're doing in anticipation of, of some increased pensions in the, in the future. And so this would be a similar type of thing to where we sock away some money today in order to prepare for this. You know, one third decrease in, in revenue in the future. So that's probably way over explanation, but that's.
No, I think that was.
No, I appreciate that, yeah.
Director Downs, can you show, do you still have that graphic at hand that shows the? Drop off at the sunset of the first quarter of the. Of the total one point five and then the remaining sunset of the. Measure X increase.
Yeah, I, let's see here, let me stop, because I think I've got to stop share and then go over to that separate screen.
Yeah, it's worth sharing it with Commissioner Perez, because it's a very. Good illustration of where we're at, where we're going and where we'll, we'll be if we don't start preparing for. Yeah, so. Was explaining that twenty eight, twenty nine, you see that drop of that twenty million. And then, you know, there's, right now, if we don't do anything, there's gonna be a deficit of twenty million at the very least, you know, so where's that money gonna come from? That's why the. That's why the focus is one time and things that are gonna help us stabilize that. But that's only indicative of the a point five percent decrease. The whole fund matures, I believe, in thirty three?
Thirty nine.
You know, so that, that's really what we're trying to drive home as a, as a committee. And then. Going back to the bullet points that we had, please take a look at them. And the priority, I think, is important. One, two, three, four. I think there was a little bit of conversation between bullet, bullet point three, what, you know, what's more important? And they both are, you know, if we could put, you know, we could make them all one. I, I think that, that would be something that we would want to do, but bullet point two and bullet point three. I think it's something that we, myself, Commissioner Perea at the time, and Sherman Johnson, we're talking about. So. Let, let, if you have any. Thoughts on the priority and the list in which they fall, you know, please let us know. I'm gonna make sure.
I don't at the moment, but I mean, I, I think it's, it's. Pretty, I mean, I understand wanting to put everything at number one, but I think the order is pretty reasonable.
Right on.
And so Kat, what, what, in terms of number six there. Do, do you have any, any, any thoughts or, or comments? I mean, you know, are we in the right direction on that? Is this kind of outside of our? You know, wheelhouse of what, what we're looking at? Does it, does it take away from any of the other? Other items?
You know, it's not something that we directly handle, because sales tax compliance is handled by the. California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, C D T F A. But, you know, there, there is some enforcement going on and. As we're able to do enforcement, we can certainly provide education like, hey, this, this is what you need to do through the state. You know, so, you know, I, I can find out more about what's being done on the enforcement side. And make sure that they're equipped, like if they shut a vendor down. Because the vendor doesn't have a health permit, you know, I can check in with code enforcement to make sure that they're. They're basically telling the vendor, okay, we're shutting you down because you don't have a county health permit. Or the county is shutting them down, so we can't enforce the county's rules. So I guess right now, our staff and the county are teamed up. To go, to go, you know, do these, these enforcements. And so I would like to think that they could easily say, oh, and besides a county health permit. You need to pay the city's business tax and you need to remit sales tax to the state. And here's information about how to get that done. So I, I think that there can be some efforts, even, even though we're not administering it and, and we have no. Legal teeth to enforce it, the state does, I still think that we can do something. And as you know, here, the, the education, certainly.
Yeah, and I think that's where we really were kind of wanting to come from of the, you know, hey. Everyone else, you know, if you're a brick and mortar, you know, you know, you have, you know. Everyone else, you know, if you're a brick and mortar, you know, you know, you have, you know, to charge sales tax, collect, remit, the whole thing. But you know, this applies to, you know, everyone that's selling in our city, and some of these operations are not, you know. Not small, but, okay, um, all right, well, uh, is there any um, other changes as we've kind of been looking at this? Or should we uh, go ahead and take a, a, a vote on this, and this would become. Our uh, twenty-twenty-three, uh, you know, committee recommendations that would. Uh, Director Downs would put, um, when the time is right, on the agenda.
I just ask a quick question before you take the vote. You know, there was, there was interest in having this information. Um, with the recommendations, do you want us to provide all of this, like in a one sheet with your recommendations? We can put them at the top or whatever, that's fine. Um, or do you just want your recommendation grid to stand alone?
What, what other information? Oh, the, with the ten-year outlook?
Yes, yes, yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm pointing at it.
Yeah, you're pointing on your other screen, probably. Yeah, you, you, you're, you're right, we, um. That's a great point, and thank you for that reminder. So, uh, yeah, yeah, I think that if you were to flip back to your, the ten-year outlook. Um, and then what we, I think we would like to do is include. Um, wh- what we talked about last time was taking this ten-year outlook, I like how you put the reds and greens, so we can see what, you know, which is revenues and expenditures. Um, and then replace the grid down below, which has the, um, you know, the, the last year's recommendations. Replace that with our um, our, our current year recommendations, especially because it highlights. That twenty-twenty-nine, that twenty-nine thirty, uh, you know, that, that drop-off year, I think is what, you know. I think we're all, all majorly concerned about there. So yeah, I mean, I, I think we, we. I, I think our, yes, I think we should put it, uh, substitute the uh, you know, the bottom of that page.
Okay.
Is everyone, uh, if, if, uh, let's go ahead and take a vote, if, um, if someone wants to make a, a, a. Make a motion to approv- approve the, the, the draft recommendations and make those our final recommendations. And include it in the uh, the, with the ten-year general outlook uh, table. Actually, I'll make, I'll go ahead and make that motion. And if someone has a second, um, on it.
Okay.
Thank you, member Lewis. Is there any other, other co- thoughts or comments? All right, well, hearing nothing, uh, uh, we wanna go ahead and call, call the, the vote for us.
Sure, member Lewis?
Aye.
Member Lugo?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Chair Johnson?
Uh, that's an aye from me also.
Motion passes.
All right, excellent. Um, that was, uh, that, that was, that was great, um. And I think that it's the um, the end of uh, and, and of our, our business calendar, um. And so now would be the time for, uh, I think staff are gonna provide any comments that they might have. Um, and then each of us will have, will be able to provide a couple of comments also.
Uh, Kristin, do you wanna share what might be coming in the future about meetings?
Yes, um, it has not been finalized yet, but it looks like uh, we're, they're leaning towards us going back to in-person meetings. So our next meeting more than likely will be an in-person meeting, and as soon as we find out, we will notify you guys.
Okay, thank you.
And as a reminder, that would be June fourteenth, is it?
That's correct.
I don't have any further staff comments. Alex, did you have anything for the committee?
Uh, no comments for me.
All right, great. And so then this is, uh, we'll, we can do a walk around, we'll do this kind of same order we've been doing. Uh, so, member Lewis?
No comments for me.
And member Lugo?
Nope, just wanna thank everybody for your time. Uh, hopefully, everybody has a great evening, and I, I find a lot of value in these meetings, so. Thank you again for being a part of the team, and thank you for letting me be, be a part of the team.
That's excellent. And member Perez?
Uh, first of all, thank you for being so welcoming. I'm super excited uh, for the upcoming meetings. And to hopefully be able to, you know, with my first, this being my first meeting, I was kind of just trying to grasp everything, so I hope to bring a lot more value. Uh, with the next and the following meetings that we have.
Excellent. Well, I, I just wanna express my thanks to, to, to everyone. This is probably one of the quicker meetings we've had, so. Uh, it's nice, um, what, uh, kind of one thing for the future, um, we need to, and I forgot, I was gonna re. Uh, gonna remind Kristen or Cat to put it on this meeting, but we need to elect a um, a vice chair. Um, and so on the next uh, um, uh, next uh, uh, meeting, I think, you know, we need to make sure we get that done. Um, and I would just also encourage uh, all of us, if we have any relationships with other council members that have vacancies to. Encourage them to uh, 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 you know, to, to appoint their, their, their members, so we can. Have all of our squares filled up on my Zoom screen, or um, all the chairs filled up, uh, if we're meeting in person next time, um. But uh, uh, Darlene, I really appreciate joining our group, cause otherwise we would have been in a real scramble, so. Uh, but that, that's, that's it for, for, for me, um.
Hey, Chair Johnson, it's Alonso. So, quick question, which, which are the words that are pending appointment?
Or five and six.
Or five and six. Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and just a reminder, I mean, they can pretty much do this uh, as they please, um. You know, as, as they can uh, find, find qualified folks that wanna, wanna work with us, um, you know, they can. You know, move on. It's not like just one time, two times a year, uh, ti- type of thing. So if you have any relationships with those folks, encourage them to. To, to get, you know, this is a commi- this is a com- for the community, so. Uh, you need to continue to, you know, uh, right now, just so we know, if one of us misses, like if no one else joins, if one of us can't ma- make it in June. We don't have a meeting, so.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, that's kind of the consequence of, of vacancies, so.
Couldn't agree with you more. Thank you.
And, yeah, excellent. All right, well, I think that is it, so, um. So unless we have anything else, uh, we'll go ahead and adjourn to our next scheduled meeting, either in person or Zoom. Uh, on June fourteenth at uh, six o'clock. So.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Fifty-eight minutes.
And, and Alonso, do you wanna stay on the line so we can talk about property tax?
Yeah, yeah, I'll stick around. If anybody wants to join, join us, feel free.
All right, excellent.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
Hey. So the, um, so the way the property tax works is, as you know, there's the one percent assessment of your. Of your property value, and property value is basically reset each time the property set. Uh, changes hands. And so, um, and, and it's basically whatever it sells for. So let's say that a property sells for a million dollars, then the assessor's office says, okay, it is now currently valued at a million dollars. So we're gonna charge you one percent assessment on that million-dollar value. Then they split up that one percent, and they distribute it to what we call the taxing entities. And so Santa Ana gets about eighteen and a half percent of that one percent. Um, and then uh, the county, various offices in the county receive pieces and parts of another chunk of it. And then education receives reliance.